This conference will now be recorded.
All right. Today is Wednesday, July 12th, 2023, and I'd like to call today's work session to order. Sorry that we're running just a few minutes late here. We wanted to make sure all the counselors were present. Clerk, may I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Fox?
Present.
Councilmember Casper?
Here.
Councilmember Boyle?
Present.
Councilmember Leah?
Present.
Councilmember Servini?
Present.
Mayor Strobin?
Here.
All right. Thank you, clerk. All right. Tonight, we do have a presentation. I'd like to please welcome Commander Chris Olson from the Kallits Tribal Police, who will be discussing Kallits Tribal Police Services. Mr. Olson, or Commander Olson, I should say. Okay. Clerk, is the mic on over there?
Hello?
Oh.
I did it. Hold it up. It's still too high. Hello, I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Patty Kinzwell Geiser. I am the Chairwoman of the Kallits Indian Tribe. And I'm excited to be here tonight. Been having some conversations with a few of you over the past time. And this is a good coming together of the City of La Center and the Kallits Indian Tribe. And I would like to welcome you all to our Aboriginal lands. We had 1.67 million acres at one time, and we're slowly buying our land back. So we have the development over here, as you all know. I know there's recognized some people that have been in your spots prior, always enjoy them. So I think we'll have a good meeting tonight, and I'm going to leave the rest talking to the powers that be here that know what we're going to talk about, but I'm just excited about this endeavor, and I think we can move forward in a good way. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, the director doesn't want to speak, so it's on to me. The PowerPoint's pretty much going to follow the outline here. I can tell you. I gotta have it closer. Okay. The PowerPoint will follow the outline pretty closely. I can tell you I've got more slides than Ridgefield and less slides than Kelly. I'm going to try very hard not to read off of it, but it's kind of, some of it's kind of detailed. I hope that everybody has questions at the end. I'm going to try to get through it fairly quickly, so there's plenty of time to discuss. The director, the deputy director, and some of the other leadership is here in case there's questions. Okay. Sorry, she told me to give her the eyeball when I needed change. This is just an outline of the proposed topics. Give you a quick background on the Kallits Tribal Police, the scope of services that we can provide, what our true objective in all of this is, some of the logistics that are based on a list of items that I was told that you were interested in hearing about, and then the big one, the annual cost. Background, so 2017, the police department was built out in a very limited fashion at the time to provide services to the Kallits tribal people, protect their properties and their interests. Since then, it's grown. We currently have seventeen commissioned officers, three civilian employees, and have the ability to hire three more and build it out. People have asked several times about what, what kind of powers do the tribal police actually have? So within Clark County, we're granted police powers through the Sheriff's Office. At the state level, all our officers are certified with the state through CJTC, which is the Criminal Justice Training Center. And then finally, we're certified federally through the Bureau of Indian Affairs. So there's really nothing that we can't handle. We don't have a lot of restrictions within the county. To give you a brief overview of what our officers, their experience levels, most of them are similar to myself in years of service. We have people from the Washington State Patrol, the Clark County Sheriff's Office, Washington Fish and Game. Altogether, we have over 300 years combined service and experience in law enforcement. Scope of services. Most of these are pretty generic. Criminal investigations, traffic enforcement, collision investigations, everything that has to do with crisis and de-escalation. School safety is a big one. Now, we obviously don't have schools on the reservation property, but children's safety, very, very much a priority for us. Our additional resources, we have Boat Patrol that's fairly active for tribal safety and different events that they have. A newest addition would be the Drone Program or UAV program that we've got up and running. That is, it's turned out to be a very useful tool. I'm sure the Sheriff's Office knows there. We've used them routinely when I was here at La Center for searching for people. It's what we call force multiplier. And we'd be happy to demonstrate that for you at some point in time. But we have currently two pilots hoping to build that to four. We have records management. Our three civilian employees handle all that. Plus, we also contract some, some things with county that they assist us with, not unlike what La Center currently does. Community outreach. The Kallits Tribal Police are very much based in community relations. It's not just about enforcement. It's not just about protection. It's very much about building relationships with community. Business partnerships, community partnerships, and engaging at community events. That's what the officers that are in our agency are very used to. They're very used to doing it from their previous agencies, and they enjoy doing it now. Objective. Number one objective is to supply police services. I gotta keep this thing close to my face. Play, excuse me, to provide police services to enhance the safety of this community above where you're at now. That's our immediate response would be to make this a safer place for the people that live here, the businesses, and the transient population that moves through the city. And there, that's a picture of our Boat Patrol, sorry. Staffing. So the numbers I'm going to give you on staffing, the five FTEs from current staffing, that's what you would be paying for. I can tell you this. What we currently have, we can put in place right now. It doesn't require any build-out or long-term transition or hiring plan. We can provide it now. You're going to get more than the five FTEs because it, and I'll explain later in the, in the proposal, that number is, is only effective as a finance number. Coverage, coverage is going to be at 24/7, 365 days a year. It will meet or exceed what La Center had previously. And from working on this project for a while now, I know what, what La Center had on its very best day, and it, it will be pretty close to that, if not better. Our line supervisors, 11-hour workdays. They usually work a swing shift, so they have as much communication with each one of the shifts as they can. Then they're on call after that for the days that they work. Command-level supervision, 24/7 on call. If there's emergencies, require command staff, we will be there as soon as we can get there. Records and evidence. So currently, the City of La Center contracts with Clark County Sheriff's Office for the property and evidence and the records. This is something that we could negotiate as part of this, this process. It's hard to say what works best for you, but that's the point in all this, is we find what works best for you. We're here to facilitate whatever the city's needs are to get it back to being a safe and secure location for people to live and work and come and use the resources that are here. Records transition. It said would transition, but let's say it could transition. And the reason I say that is because I don't know what you want to do with your records. I don't know if you want Kallits Tribal Police to manage your records. I don't know if you want to continue the services through Clark County Sheriff's Office. These are all things that would have to be discussed, but there are options. If they were to be transferred over to us, we would try to negotiate that and work it out for something towards the end of the year to take that weight off the Sheriff's Office. Workflow data separation. Big words. I know questions have come up as how do you plan on separating the workload of what goes on on the reservation with the workload in La Center? It's really done on the back end through our CAD system, our computer-aided dispatch system. And we can use a, an app called First Watch, where I can take that, manipulate it, and I can build geo fences around the City of La Center and around reservation, and I can separate out all the workload that takes place, the calls, the types of calls, and provide that for you whenever it's needed. Community outreach. Community-oriented policing is a cornerstone for this department. We do a lot of community outreach. Right now, we, because of the nice weather, have done several things with our Boat Patrol, different events around the county, the different cities that have events. We try to be present at all those. But where's that, where's that meet your need? Where that would meet your need is being present for things like our days, making sure that your Twilight Parade is properly staffed, so it's safe. Being at the Saturdays in the park. So when we've got movies or concerts in the park, we've got officers that can walk through and make sure there's not any problems. Another big part of community outreach for us would be engaging with the schools. When I was here, that was one of my priorities, hasn't changed, and it's been a blessing that a lot of the priorities I've had in this job over 20 years are exactly the priorities that the Kallits Tribal Police and the Kallits Tribal, the Indian Tribe have voiced that it's very much the same priorities for them. I don't think there's anybody in this room that's not going to make children a priority. But in a, in a world right now where we've got law enforcement agencies that are forced to shut down SRO programs and pull safety out of our schools, we need to fight against that, and that's something we would like to be able to provide. Investigative services. So the center's never had a detective. It's never needed a detective other than for some high-priority things, in which case we've been able to turn to the Major Crimes Unit with the Sheriff's Office. We also use CJC, which is a Child Justice Center, when we, when it's been needed for sensitive cases involving children, where we don't want just anybody interviewing those children. So we have regional resources for those, but the rest of it was all done by the officers of the center. Our recommendation is it stays that way. That being said, if something were to occur where we needed a detective with experience to come in, Kallits Tribal Police has a detective's position and experienced detective in that position, so we can provide that when needed. I don't want to speak too much about MC or CJC other than to say they're, they're very useful tools when they're needed for high-profile events. And it especially helps when you're working with a city that has limited resources in its police department. We're hoping to alleviate some of that, but still, those, those two are very useful for the City of La Center. Communication. Who's going to be talking to you and who's going to be interacting with the people that work here and that serve in the positions you serve in? Ultimately, that falls to the Director of the Kallits Tribal Police. I will say more than likely, you're looking at him. I will be the person that handles your day-to-day needs. I can tell you that it was an honor to be here for 21 years, and I would never have found myself in this position in a million years in my head, but I'm here now, and it's a blessing to be able to stand up here again and propose something that can help this city. Community interaction. So this has a little bit to do with how do we get the community re-contact with the law enforcement that's going to be protecting it? Number one is, it's highly recommended that either through negotiation or through the city itself, that we hire somebody that gets back in that building over there. And I understand Chief Richardson's been there. I'm talking somebody more in a clerical position that can answer your questions, answer phones, and be the person that, I mean, let, let's just cut to it. The people that live here need to have as much familiarity as they can get because so much has changed. They need to be able to call their own police station, talk to somebody, request a resource, or get advice immediately. And that person can then reach out to the on-duty officers that are patrolling or possibly in the office, or get a hold of administration. Somebody needs to be in that chair in there. Now, how, how that works, I don't know. It's something we've got to negotiate. We've got to talk about, find out what's best for this city. One of the ideas that has been brought up is, what do you do with the building if you don't have a full police department staffed in it? One thing that's very popular in this county and in this state are what are called law enforcement rest stops. It's locations for police where they can go and have a safe place that's not open to the public, to eat their meals, to do their reports. It's not been that way, obviously, for La Center officers in the past, but for instance, county deputies. When they're up in North County, there's nowhere for them up here to go, especially if it's after hours and most businesses are closed. If they've got to use a bathroom and they're coming back from Cedar Creek, there's no place really for them to stop and do that. So the proposal is that we, we open up that building just for that purpose. It does two things. One, it sends a message from the city that it supports its law enforcement in this county. And two, it gets patrol cars moving through the city regularly and not just specific patrol cars, county, whoever happens to be up here. If there's an agency, many times, La Center has opened its doors to the FBI and to other agencies have done investigations up here because they can use the interview room. And I think it's important to send a message to the citizens that live here that this resource is back in play. We have police here, and we have them engaged, even if they come from other agencies. I'll touch briefly on this, rebranding of patrol cars. I know that those well above me are open to discussing that, but what that looks like until people get in a room and start having those conversations, I can't define that for you. But I will say that there, there's an openness to discussing how that would look. So commitment. Our present commitment is obvious. Let's get in the city and let's make it safe, so people don't have to worry about what's going on, whether somebody's going to be able to be there if there's an emergency or a trauma or a death or gunfire, as rarely as that happens in this city. But let's get out there and start making a change and making it safer. The second part that we're committed to is doing this at a cost that meets the requirement to balance your budget. I know that's super hard for the city right now, and if we can assist in that fashion, that's why I said you'd be charged for five bodies, although you're going to get more service than that. And of course, improve the current level of safety and security for the community members. Our future commitment, if, if you decide that you want to partner with the Kallits Indian Tribe and the Tribal Police, is to start working on short and long-term plans for making the city even more safe, building relationships with the schools, with the businesses, with the council, with us, to make sure that we are providing everything that we can within our power to make this community safer. Making this community safer and making the community that's up at the junction safer can change the face of North County. I know this because there was a time when I worked here where law enforcement had enough control over the City of La Center that people that were wanted, people committing crimes, would not cross over the city limits. They would drive around the city because they didn't want to have to deal with us, and I would like to get it back to that. I want people that have ill intent to avoid this city like the plague and reservation property. We're working hard up there to send a message to people that want to commit crimes, as you don't belong here. This is for people to enjoy, not for you to ruin. The second part of that is, well, I guess I've already said it, developing short and long-term plans for the safety and security. The last part is a commitment to facilitating the City of La Center's vision of law enforcement for the future. It's a generic term, right? It's a statement that doesn't, isn't quite defined. That's because you need to define it. You need to tell us, work with us as to what it is you want to do. You know, do you want two years down the road to start your own police department back up and get it flowing again? We would like to help you do that. If you want to work with us and tell other agencies in the area are back on their feet and can assist, we can do that. This is all about being a decent neighbor, helping you lift a load right now that's, that really is very hard to lift for the city by itself. Big, big one, right? Indemnification. How, how is the tribe going to take care of that? You know, I put a statement in there that's pretty generic. We'll have to negotiate, but in the end, the, the Kallits Indian Tribe will draft contract language and obtain an insurance minor that's consistent with what the industry standard is for law enforcement. Good faith. That's a big one. We are in a very fluid state in law enforcement. You're in a very fluid state when it comes to revenue and trying to balance your budget. Things can happen. I can't forecast any of that. I can't define it for you. I can say that we're willing to open up a 90-day window that if there's manpower shortages, if there's money shortages, if things need to change, if other avenues need to be looked at, let's have those conversations. Let's have the ability to have that in that window of let's redefine what we're doing here. That serves us both in a positive way. Annual costs. There's a quick breakdown. I know there's going to be more questions about that, and I'm not the man to answer the money questions, but I can introduce you to the man who does. That number is for 2024. It was gone through thoroughly, and I can tell you for 2023, because like I said, we can, we have no extended time period we have to deal with. So we can prorate that so that we're, we're meeting whatever contract agreement that, that the city and the tribe would come to. So with that, I'm going to open it up to questions. I can handle some of the logistical stuff, but there's going to be others that I'm going to defer to for the other stuff.
Thank you, Commander. This picture says, "Don't mess with Patty."
All right. Good evening. Thanks again for allowing us to come here. I'm Sean Pound, Director of Public Safety, Public Safety for the Kallits Indian Police Department. One thing I just kind of wanted to go over, reiterate is, after hearing the presentation by the Clark County Sheriff's Office here a couple of weeks, this is not that. They presented a long, extensive, you know, multi-year plan to provide, you know, more permanent services up here. This is, again, trying to, as Commander Olson said, is being the good neighbor and trying to fill a need until that, that time comes. There's been no, no bones about the Sheriff's Office saying, there's a lot of things and dynamics have to come into play before they're able to provide those full services, you know, with the academy and that sort of thing, and it's going to take some time. And I've had conversations with the, maybe the command staff of the Sheriff's Office, including Sheriff Horch, and we're on the same page with that. And in fact, you said it was okay that I bring up that we had this conversation. So the main goal is, like I said, is to get back, to getting law enforcement officers back in the streets, back around the schools, and let them know that, no, this is not an abandoned city. This is not a safe haven for, excuse my French, dirtbags to come here and do whatever they want. And so we, we had the opportunity and we are able to work out a plan to be able to make that happen, to be able to help you guys out, and that's what we're planning to do. And then also, again, as Commander Olson has said, is, you know, as you guys figure out which direction you want to go, which pathway you want to go for public safety, we're, we're willing to help you with whatever path that is. You know, I have, we have great, super-strong partnerships with the county, and I'm blessed to say that. I retired there after 20 years of service to come work for the tribe for now four and a half years, and we still have those partnerships to keep on building, and, and there's, and I was assured by Sheriff's Office, we will. And, and so I just kind of wanted to add that before we get some questions.
Thank you, Director. Any questions? I see everybody writing, so.
Okay. Back in one of the earlier slides, you said you have authorization to hire three more officers. Are there, are there any authorizations or plans to hire additional non-commission support staff? I know you said you had three.
Right. Not, not at this time.
Not at this time.
So here's, here's kind of a little bit difference thing between the proposal done by the Sheriff's Office and ours. At the beginning, they had this initial startup cost, if you want to call it, type of thing. And I didn't see the benefit of doing that for two reasons. Actually, to benefit that both you and us. Let's say, for example, that we get that upfront cost money, and for whatever reason, we can't fulfill that anymore. We just walked away with your money. Okay, but on the other hand, too, is your, and if, if you guys choose to back out, then I'm overstaffed. And now, and I can't justify that in my budget, so then I have to find a place for those guys to work. And so we were, like I said, we're able to figure out what the current staffing levels that we have to be able to make this work. The three additional openings are, those openings are part of my original 2023 budget anyways. We're just realigning how we do our scheduling, how we're doing our training to be able to get that additional bodies on the road now. If that makes sense.
Yeah. Yeah, and just to clarify, the, the additional clerical position that is recommended would be a fourth person for you?
That additional cleric position that was listed in the slide that Commander Olson was saying, we're asking that that's your guys' commitment on your side. That's not part of our staff, because again, if things part ways, you probably still don't want that person there to serve some sort of role.
Okay.
And I believe that was in all three presentations that we've had, and each of them has said that we needed to hire a clerk.
Which makes sense.
Yeah, of course. I, I just, I didn't know if that was a, a body that would need to be hired through the Kallits Tribe and then assigned out here.
No, it begins for the same reasons that if one of us decides to part ways, we're not going, okay, what are we going to do with this person?
Okay. So I guess what I'm confused on then is, would that be a La Center, a City of La Center employee? Is that what you're recommending, is that we hire that person and then keep them here? Okay.
That's what I was gonna say.
All right. The only other question I had was event coverage. In the cost breakdown, you list the overtime expenses. Is there a cap on that overtime expense? And if, what does that plan look like? And the reason I'm asking is if, say, we have our days. One, would that be staffed with overtime? And then, two, would those, would those officers be mandated to fill those?
So potentially, yes, it could affect the overtime. Also, as, as you, even with the Sheriff's Office, any other police department, if you have, where we have our three minimum persons staffing for this large beat, if a person calls in sick or whatever, then you have to backfill that spot to be able to make that coverage work.
Right.
So potentially, yes, also, obviously depends on the type of venue that you have. You may have something that may only need one extra body. Even if something that you've heard some rumors that's going to get a little rampant bunches, that we may need to call in more resources.
Right. It's okay. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for that presentation. I just had one thing that I had noted here is that it said, Commander Olson said that there weren't many limitations that you guys had. I just didn't know, do you guys have an idea of what limitations you do have?
There is nothing that we can't do in, in the County of Clark than everybody else in the County of Clark. Technically, we're also state-certified, but we like to keep it a little cleaner. So yes, I can even go into Kallits County if I want to, just like anybody from the Sheriff's Office with a state certifications. So that's part of the reason how we got that is that we follow the same certifications of every other police officer. So that's part of the reason how we got that is that we follow the same certifications of every other police officer that is required in the state. All the stuff that's mandated by the Criminal Justice Training Commission, all that. We put our policies in line with all of our regional law enforcement partners. For those reasons, there's no question if, if an officer either goes on or off the reservation, the policies and procedures are going to be the same. That keeps it clean.
Okay. Cool. Very well. Thank you.
When you mentioned school safety and having an officer that you guys desire, love school, I think we all do and can all support that. What does that look like? Are you talking about like an officer that would just be part of the 27, 24 hour patrol and they would stop by and obviously do, or somebody that would actually be there manning post all day?
Wouldn't be manning the post.
Okay.
But we most certainly want to have that visibility and bring the officers back. Because even though we've all seen in law enforcement, before they put SROs in schools, there was a huge divide between law enforcement, especially the teenage community.
Yeah.
And having that SRO interaction really built that bridge. And so you could still achieve some of that, not as strong, obviously, but by just having that availability and visibility in schools.
Okay, that makes sense. And then plus, La Center is so small. I think we can all agree that even, even a fraction of a presence makes a huge difference, you know? Having them drive through the lower parking lot every day at, you know, 2:50, it's like, okay, kids, we're here, right? It's like that presence is such a difference. But yeah, I would be surprised if you were going to have somebody up there the whole time. So I was just curious, but thank you. Great presentation. Great offerings.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for coming to give your presentation tonight. My question is-
Can you pull the mic to you? Thank you.
My question is, do you hire a lot of laterals? Or if you hire somebody that's brand new to law enforcement, then where do they go get their training?
Okay, so yes, to both. We've attracted a lot of laterals, which is really good, especially for a new police department. You got that experience, which is really great. We have ran four people through the academy, basic academy, and that was down at the Federal Law Enforcement Training Center. So that's how they got with the police academy there. But then they have to come up here and go through the two week equivalency academy through West Chicago Criminal Justice Training Commission.
Okay, thank you.
I have another question. Are the wages comparable to what the county is getting now? I know the county wasn't being paid enough. They were the lowest paid for a long time, and now they've gotten raises. So are your men being paid comparable to that?
Yes. And one thing, it's, it's been a real blessing working for the Calhats Indian Tribe is they're really conscientious as how their employees are treated. And we just went through to basically, they doubled down on it and they did a compensation study last year to ensure it's not only just being in the field comparable, but regionally comparable.
Mayor, I had a clarifac- clarification question on the overtime. So on the presentation, it says overtime expenses was included, but I wasn't sure in his answer to Councilmember Casper, it sounded like that was additional. So can we ask that?
But it's not additional. It's a part of the whole package.
Okay. So then there's no, it doesn't matter how much overtime there is, it's included.
It's like with a lot of things, if there's going to be this drastic change, then we're going to, you know, obviously come back to the table, same, same on your position too.
Thanks.
Sure. If you're experiencing a bunch of overtime all of a sudden, because we have events every month or something, is that kind of what you're getting at? We'd have to come back to the table.
Correct. And part of the reason too, we brought up is that separating the call load and keeping track of that. You know, because this is kind of just stepping into it by analyzing, okay, how many events, you know, how many people, that sort of thing. If, if this goes into a longer extended period, then obviously then the, the numbers get adjusted appropriately.
Of course. Yeah. Totally.
Um, I have a question of how many women have you hired on the, on your force?
Two.
Two?
Two. One did lateral over to Richfield Police Department.
Oh, thanks.
Any other questions? I, I do actually have one. Mutual aid. Do you guys, or do you guys have mutual aid with other agencies or other cities or anything like that?
We have previous courses to Clark County, Richfield, Woodland. We have a, one officer that's actually cross-commissioned in Lewis County. So we, because the, we have a tribal property out there in other places. So we're trying to network and gain those agreements, relationships as far as we possibly can. You know, we do a lot of, we do some events also with the, with the police department, the shop of cop and that sort of thing. So it's been a really productive for us.
Yeah, that answers my question. Thank you, Director. There, oh, there was one more. Commander Olson said something about, he would explain something on the finance earlier, that it was a, only a number, and he would explain later in the slides. Can you guys touch base?
I can, I can give you how that was broken down. I don't have that sheet with me, but I most certainly can get that sheet too. But it was broken down between obviously the wages, benefits, overtime, equipment, supplies. And, you know, and put in line of what they kind of expect the, the 2024 numbers to be. And of course, who really knows what that's going to look like as far as interest rates and stuff, right?
Totally.
What I was referring to when I said that was the slide that I got to that said, we would work within the budget to make you, to help you balance that budget.
Yeah.
That's what I was referring to.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you for the clarification.
Right. Thank you again.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. No other questions at all? Lot of comments? Councilmember Boyle, do you have questions?
No, I'm good. You were leaning in.
All right. Well, I would like to thank you, Commander Olson and the Calhats Tribe for tonight's presentation. We do appreciate it. And thank you all for coming. At this point, decisions will not be made tonight. I believe at our next meeting, we'll be having a discussion to decide which way to move forward with. Regardless of whatever way that the council decides to move forward, you will hear from me personally. I, to at least give you that respect as well. I do appreciate it, and that will conclude tonight's works session. Thank you.
This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening. Can you start the recording, please?
We are recording.
All right. Thank you. Today is Wednesday, July 12th, 2023, and I'd like to call today's council meeting to order. If we could all please stand to say the Pledge of Allegiance. All right. Clerk, may I please have the roll call?
Councilmember Fox. Member Casper.
Here.
Councilmember Boyle.
Present.
Councilmember Leah. Councilmember Servini.
Present.
Mayor Strobin.
Here.
All right. Clerk, can we, is there any public comments from the audience?
We do have one. Al, do you want to come on up?
Al Filla, 36016 Northwest Jenny Creek Road. He moved. I didn't realize that I was supposed to be, you know, scared and insecure in my, in my house. You know, I felt that Chief Richardson's done a good job of providing us with police protection. And now I hear somebody who wants to take over that telling me, no, we've been insecure. Well, I haven't. I didn't know anything about it. Why haven't you guys did your job and informed us? You know, I mean, I've been coming to these meetings and I, granted, I don't pay attention a lot of times, but you know, somebody should have said something. You know, if you get off Facebook, you know, there you hear all about it. You know, and all other kinds of rumors and stuff, but when it comes down to facts, you know, as far as Al Filla knows, you know, I haven't felt unsafe or insecure in my house. And well, Saturday, hey, everybody, look at that. In fact, many years ago, they, they sold these T-shirts, you know, so if you're not coming down to Sir Wheeler Park on Saturday, you know, that amphitheater fills right up. And if you want to see something where about half the people come, go to Woodlands on, not this Friday, but next Friday, they'll have one down at Woodland Horseshoe Park. And you'll see about half as many people. Oh, I love it. Because my thing is more people come out to things, the better we are. Okay. Well, thank you. God bless America.
Thank you, Al.
Dennis Hill.
Al, you're a tough act to follow. Dennis Hill, 1316 West Alder Place, La Center. Good evening, City Council, Mayor and La Center citizens. I want to share my appreciation to the Clark County Sheriff, John Horch, and his staff for picking up the mantle from Sheriff Chuck Atkins and continuing to seek the best solution for policing the city of La Center. I also want to thank Administrative Chief Bob Richardson for his tireless, tireless efforts in seeking permanent police services for La Center. I also want to thank our previous mayor, Greg Thornton, for getting the ball rolling and for working very hard with previous Clark County Sheriff Chuck Atkins to help us get to where we are today. Sheriff Horch and all three of these men and their staffs have done an outstanding job in getting us to this point. I know there's more work to do. I also want to commend Bob Richardson for all that he does each day to try and staff our police patrols by scheduling off-duty police officers and deputies from our neighboring city police departments and sheriff's department. Thanks again. We appreciate all your efforts. I also want to thank our previous city council for all their hard work. And thanks to our current city council for their current efforts. Thank you and God bless America.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Valerie? Oh, okay. Melissa?
Melissa Flat. I'm here with La Center United. Tonight, I just wanted to do a reminder for the Narcan training tomorrow. City of La Center is gracious enough to host it in this building since the community center is not open. So we'll be here at 5:30 to 7:00 PM. And you can get up to two doses of nasal Narcan once the training is over, and you can get up to four doses if you're willing to do an injectable. See what else. Oh, August 23rd, we are doing Chalk the Wox. We're pushed it back a week because some of us are out of town. We're going to do an ice cream social at that time. October 21st, we've scheduled a youth mental health first aid training. So that'll be open to 30 participants. It's a six to eight hour training and lunch will be provided. And I think that's all we have right now that's on the books. Oh, we're going to do a breakfast with Santa too. And we're getting that started, and that'll be before Thanksgiving. So hopefully families could come in, have breakfast, get their holiday photos taken before the holidays. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Clerk, is there any other comments from the audience?
I have no more comment cards.
All right. For those calling in, please press star six to unmute yourselves to speak. And please say your name and your address.
Hello, this is Kimberly Goel, Elbon. We got a little echo here. Live citizen of Clark County. Lived here in La Center, Washington, where my mother was born. So I'm going to say your check's payable. I'm going to make a quick note. I hope there is not any money going out to spray the toxic chemicals that are killing the frogs that we eat, the mosquitoes. So let's not fall into that category. In fact, I'm, I, I'm going to encourage La Center to break forms from Clark County and and the Vancouver implications that they have here for this city, because you've spoken about Vancouver, and they are United Nations members practicing just that. So I did speak at the Clark County Council meeting today where they will add 2,500 more housing units this year only, and next year, who knows what, at hard earned tax dollars under treasonist Joe Biden and not, he is not a president of the United States of America. Under his Build Back Better bumble and the American Rescue Plan, again, using hard earned tax dollars to fulfill the one world order he is a part of. And you guys need to know this about Biden. He's, there is commissions going on and everything to get him out. They, they know he's not supposed to be there anyway. He's done a lot of illegal things. So citizens, please listen daily to radio FM 101.1 for the true facts, because they will not read, you will not read the truth in the Colombian or any local news media outlet. Which brings me to say, Clark County, Washington, USA does not have to go along with the Growth Management Act and all the other things that they're going along with as Vancouver City Council is. And I'm asking La Center to be a city and a town where we can follow the American Constitution and not the United Nations as Vancouver and Clark County is. So people need to be aware of that. So God bless the Native Americans, yet I will say this. It's going to cost in the year 2024, $1,124,807.49 to have the tribe police our city. I'm not really for it yet because just like the other speaker said, we don't have a lot of information. There is no public input on this that I can hear of. And yes, that's a gracious thing, but just like anything that looks good on the outside, there's always something underneath, isn't there? Well, the Calhats tribe had to go through the federal government to be okayed to be a tribe. I find that kind of insulting myself. I think they should be their own entity, of which I'm going to look into the alienate and the tribal and all that, you know? We want them as friends, but we want them to govern themselves, not under this tyrannias, whatever he wants to call himself, Joe Biden. He's a criminal. So we want to make sure that these people are following not the socialist agenda, but to follow the Constitution. And so again, I'll say no spray. And then I was going to go on to the fire and rescue Clark County.
Thank you. If there are any other comments from those calling in, please press star six to unmute yourselves to speak. State your name and address. Clerk, are there any public comments to be read?
None to be read.
Thank you. If there are no requests for any items to be removed, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes. Thank you, Council. And I do not see the chief.
Chief, are you on the call? I don't think he's on. And I just sent him an email. So if I hear back from him, I'll let you know.
We can bring it back in. Okay. Thank you, Mayor. All right. Next up, Mayor's Report. Concert in the Park Series, as Al stated over there, continues this Saturday, July 15th at 5:30 PM, where Derek Niemann will be performing, followed by Gary Bennett and the Coattail Riders. Mary Ann Fleming and Kevin Self and the Tornados will be performing next Saturday, July 22nd. Please remember to come out and support the farmer's market on Thursday nights. And the citywide garage sale will be held July 15th. And I believe you can get information from that on, on the R Days website. There will be a ribbon cutting ceremony on Friday at East Fort Commons Apartments at 3:00 PM. They are located at 1724 West 15th Street. Please come out and enjoy. There will be no national night out this year, unfortunately. Maybe next year. I do want to reiterate Melissa's statement for La Center United about the overdose prevention, recognition and response training. It's something that I pursued several times and La Center United really took that over and, and they've made it happen. So I want to make sure they get a shout out for that and some recognition and to please join us tomorrow night. That said, next up is the Attorney's Report. Bronson, welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing to report tonight. It's nice to be back.
No Riverside?
You don't want to hear about it. I'm sparing you.
Questions for the attorney? All right. Seeing there's no questions for the attorney, we'll move on. Council comments. Next up, Councilmember Fox.
Hi, good evening. Happy to be here. Sorry to see we lost half of our attendance with the, the earlier meeting. But you know, I'm feeling kind of a lot of fire in my belly tonight, and I just want to say that, you know, And I just want to say that, you know, sitting in this seat for as long as I have, not very long, but long enough to see that the prior administration really just kept giving us the runaround for a long time on this police and giving us excuses and giving us, you know, just not, you know, unprotected us for too long, in my opinion. I know Chief Richardson has done a lot to, you know, hold down the fort with what he's had to work with, but I just am very thankful to be at this juncture here where we can, especially as we all know the events that have happened up at the high school yesterday. And, you know, I think this is no greater time to start making solutions moving forwards that our town can be actually protected instead of, you know, the back-and-forth. So, you know, having leadership that actually can push things forward and actually get things done makes a huge difference. And I'm excited for the future of La Center and thankful for, you know, Ridgefield and Clark County and Ailinay for coming together and, you know, being excited to partner with us. And now we have actual real choices. So I just want to say that I'm excited to move forward and see the future of La Center actually get some real strong protection. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Casper?
Thank you. You know, I was trying to decide what I was going to say, and I haven't really decided yet. So I'm just going to start and then see where it goes from here. You know, I think I like what Al had said, because that's really the attitude I think that all of our citizens should have. It is a very safe city. I don't feel, I don't feel that we live in a dangerous place. I don't have an issue raising my family here. Of course, we need something, so we've got people almost fighting over us now, right? We had a good presentation two weeks ago. We had a great one from the tribe tonight. You know, to be honest with you, I know who all of these people are, regardless of which contract we go with. And I am more than confident in having any of them protecting my home if I'm not around or if I'm out of town and knowing that my family is still safe regardless. So I think we're in a really good spot, and it feels good to be in that position finally. So, you know, I really appreciate them coming in and giving us our options to look at. You know, I don't know exactly what the next step is, but I would, I'd like to throw out that maybe prior to any vote, we have a work session where we can just, we don't have to have the entities that are giving us these options, but so that the council can sit here and have an open discussion in front of you. And hopefully, we have an even bigger crowd than this. This is, this is good to see this many people, but it would be nice to have that. And maybe it's already planned. I don't know. But I'd like to have a work session where we can just discuss the two, compare the two options side by side. So I think that's it. I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Boyle?
Well, first off, thanks, everybody, for coming out. Yeah, I'll second what Melissa said. I agree in its full entirety. And I also agree a lot with what Casey said here. It's all true. We're, I do feel like we're in a good spot. We have a lot of great options. Again, it's always great to hear from the community. That's what we're here for, to, you know, represent you guys. So any and all commentary is welcome, and we'd love to hear what you have to say about what we're trying to accomplish. Other than that, moving forward, I guess, I don't know if it was earlier this week. I don't know. I've kind of been out of town the last couple of weeks. And anyways, I saw a guy and a gal checking car door handles here earlier this week or last week. I can't remember. I reported it, but just a reminder to keep your doors locked. Yeah, other than that, man, I had something. I may cannot remember. Oh, Al, here we go. So C-Train, sorry, guys. So Sean Donaghy from C-Train reached back out to me about trying to find rides for people to get to Meals on Wheels. And he sent me an email just saying, right now, they're struggling a little bit just because they're trying to figure out the inner workings of who to talk to in La Center, being that we are going to Ridgefield right now for Meals on Wheels. And so right now, he said that, you know, they need to get somebody's contact information so that they can work on this, so we can find the people that need help getting to Meals on Wheels. But they said they're definitely willing to get somebody out there once they can get those people identified. And then obviously, once we get back in La Center, at the community center, they'll be able to further assist people as well in getting directly to Meals on Wheels and the ones that need help getting there. So, yeah, so they are still working on it. I just want to let you know that that hasn't been gunned out the window and something that is still being worked on. But other than that, that's all I got.
Thank you. Councilmember Layla?
Thank you. I'm really excited about several things that I've been seeing going on. One thing is on July sixth, which was a Thursday. There, can you hear me now? I attended a town hall in Battleground because it had to do with closing Larch. And this type of thing could potentially affect La Center. If they, the inmates are good firefighters, plus they have other, you know, really innovative things that they do at Larch Mountain. They really help inmates to get their GED and to find jobs and that sort of thing. So I really appreciate that, that particular facility. There were some big names there. There was Public Land Commissioner Hillary France. There was Stephanie McClintock, Greg Cheney, and Senator Linda Wilson, all there present. And the place was so packed, it was overflowing into the parking lot. So it was a very good meeting. I got back in time to attend the farmer's market. I thank La Center Church for having that farmer's market. And I always make a point to go look up Al to say, hey, I'm here, because he wants to see city council people. And I make sure I let him know that I'm there. Thanks, Al, for keeping us on our toes. Saturday, I went to a grand opening of a darling place called La Petite. And she does facials and hair removal, that type of thing. Very nice lady. She had a very nice opening. And then the store right next door is called Willow and Fern, and she had a soft opening. And she's bringing in artisans from, she wants to get up to like forty different artisans. Right now, I think she's got twenty. So I want to encourage people with these new businesses of Podunk Pizza. I go there every Sunday night and get me a pizza. So I think it's really important. We're bringing in more businesses, and we want to make sure that people know about these and use them. And the other thing I did on Saturday is I went to the Stern Wheeler to hear the music, and it was great. So I looked up Al, too, by the way. So I just am excited about all the things I see going on in La Center.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Serbini?
I don't have anything in addition to add.
Thank you. All right. I see Chief Nor has entered the building. Chief, how are you doing tonight? No, you're good. Please welcome Fire Chief John Nor, who will be presenting the Clark Kowalski Fire Rescue Presentation.
We've got a couple of folks joining me. Follow me there. Two of our commissioners, Stan Shun and Jade Burke. And then the crew is coming over here, too.
They're not following you, chief. They're sitting down.
And they don't want to, yeah, they're like, go ahead, chief.
They're very truthful. Welcome. My name's John Nor, the chief for Clark County Fire Rescue. As I said, on the, on the left down here is Stan Shun. He's our board chair. And when I get into governance, it'll kind of explain a little bit. And then one of our other board members, Jade Burke. So just a little update. I was here about a year ago to give an update on what we had going on. And so just for new council members and to talk about any changes that we've had this year. So Clark County Fire Rescue is what we call a combination fire department. We have career firefighters as well as volunteer firefighters to help respond throughout our area. In Washington State, the most predominant ways you have a fire department is a city will provide their own fire department, or they will contract with or annex into a fire district or a regional fire authority. So fire districts and regional fire authorities are separate junior taxing districts. We collect our, we collect taxes from property tax, from the taxpayers, goes directly to our general fund, and then we utilize that to provide service to all of our response area. We'll do the next slide. Actually, take it back one. I got to point out a big number there. So I've been the fire chief here for seven years now, and we've really accomplished a lot. But if you'll notice that, that response number across the district last year, we responded to five thousand four hundred and eighteen calls. When I started here seven years ago, we had just broke three thousand calls a year. And so we've seen a dramatic increase in our services. Increase, service demand is driven by people. And you, many people have heard me say this quote over the last few years, but except for the occasional lightning strike, fires do not happen where people are not located, right? So people cause fires or the act of people being nearby, whether it be cooking, whether it be mechanical processes, whether it's a train driving through town. It's something around people that cause fires. And emergency medical incidents do not happen where people aren't either, because we only respond on people emergencies. So with a caveat, with the occasional cow stuck in the mud or a kitten stuck behind a water heater, we will go out on some of those. We do not get cats out of trees. They'll come down on their own. So we've seen our response volume continue to rise over the years, and it's related to the increases in population right here in the county. Next one, please. So our service area, we serve about fifty-five thousand residents in a hundred and twenty-five square miles of northwest Clark County and southwest Kowalski County. So we serve the city of Ridgefield, La Center, Woodland, the Kowalski Indian Reservation, and then unincorporated counties. So if you look on the screen, you'll see the dots up in the far upper left. That's our station twenty-nine in Woodland. Right about in the upper middle is La Center. So we have a station right here in downtown La Center. One in Ridgefield, just east of the junction. One in Charter Oak, over in the northeast corner, on two ninety-ninth and one hundred and twelfth. Our Dollar's Corner Station is on Seventy-second Avenue and two nineteenth. And then a station that we just recently have begun staffing is a station down at the fairgrounds, right on the border with Fire District Six. So we staff that station two-thirds of the time, and Fire District Six, which is Hazeldale, Falida, Salmon Creek, will begin staffing at one-third of the time in September. So what we had was, with all the development happening along the one-seventy-ninth corridor, we were seeing an ever more increasing number of incidents down there. We weren't able to reach those in a timely fashion from our existing fire stations. So we approached Fire District Six on that. It was a station that had been there for twenty years at the public safety complex, had been staffed with volunteers before. And volunteerism in the fire service has been decreasing, not just locally, but nationwide for many years. It's hard to find people that can commit the amount of time necessary to stay up on the training, on everything you need to know, and do your volunteer time or do the responses we expect. So those are our six stations. It includes fourteen miles of Interstate Five, about fourteen miles of BNSF Railroad. And then we have a lot of riverfront on the Columbia River, Lake River, and then the north and east forks of the Lewis River. Next slide, please. So what do we do? A lot of people, you know, the most obvious thing is fire suppression. You know, it's in our patch, and most people see a fire engine ladder truck. They think about a fire. So structure fires, vehicle fires, natural vegetation fires. So this is that season where we get a lot of grass fires, brush fires that extend into buildings, sometimes in crop fields. But just about anything, if it's on fire in the district, we're going to go and make sure it's out. We also do emergency medical services, have for many decades here. And so we have firefighter EMTs. That's what you call basic life support. They can render the type of aid to keep you going. CPR, stop somebody who's bleeding out, assist with respirations, things of that nature. And then we have paramedics on our rigs also. And that's what we call advanced life support. So they're able to do some advanced procedures, airway management, so they put a tube in the throat and have to assist somebody with breathing, take over their breathing, drugs. We can administer drugs for cardiac problems, for respiratory distress, give products to help keep their system full if they're bleeding out, so keep enough fluid in their system. And I'm going to come back and talk about EMS a little bit later also. We do technical rescue, so that's if somebody is entrapped. Usually, it's they're entrapped in some machinery. They're entrapped in a vehicle that's crashed. They may be in a confined space. They may be in a trench. So a lot of different things there. We just had, just I think this past week, we had a young person who was trapped in machinery. It took quite a while to get him disentangled from the machinery, stabilized, medically stabilized, and transported to the hospital. We actually just received word from his family that he had requested the crews come and visit him at Randall's Children's Hospital. So we're going to send a crew down to visit that person down at Randall's later this week. We have a marine division. So we have here at the La Center station, a raft that can go on, can go into any of the lakes that we have in the district. There are several. And because the Lewis River runs so shallow right here through town, most of the year, the raft is the only thing that's going to be able to get up and down the river. We did have an incident a few years ago where a gentleman tried to take a powerboat up the river when it was flowing very heavily. We don't know why he did that, but thankfully, he put his two daughters in life jackets, but he did not have a life jacket on himself. He got entangled, some trees just upstream from town here, and had to be rescued by our tech rescue team and our rescue boat. But over at the Ridgefield Marina, we have a large fireboat as well as what we call a smaller rescue boat. It's a shallow draft boat, and it can make it up the Lewis River all the way to the dams and then into a lot of the waterways, especially in the winter. Sometimes along the Columbia River, the water gets high enough that we can get into some of the islands where the fireboat couldn't. We also have rescue swimmers. So a team of fourteen of our firefighters are trained to swim. So any time someone's caught in swift water, they put on their dry suits, they can go out and rescue them and do a swift water rescue. We also have our community risk reduction program. And that was a slide that I failed to put in here, some of the different things that we're doing with that. But community risk reduction is our fire marshal's office. They do plans review for new buildings that are being built. They go out and do inspections on businesses. They assist with investigation of fires. So once a fire occurs, we want to know why it happened. So they'll assist with the investigation. And that's the one branch. That's the fire marshal branch of community risk reduction. And then we have another one called the CARES branch. And CARES is made up of two teams. One is a team that is a community paramedic and a person who specializes in home safety. And they will get referrals from the community or from our responders or from family members to go out and check on people and just to hook them up with the right resource, make sure their home is safe. We've gotten a grant from AdSWA, the agency on aging for Southwest Washington. And they've given us several thousand dollars to buy grab bars and put some other safety items in people's homes. So we'll go out and install those in people's homes. And then our community paramedic checks on them for medical need, does a little assessment, and then refers them to social service programs that might be more appropriate. And why we look at that is, there's a program that if it keeps people from calling nine-one-one, it keeps an emergency rig in service. So I've always said, I'd much rather go on an appointment at two P. M. and check on someone to make sure they're okay than a nine-one-one call at two A. M. utilizing a service that could be out there responding to an emergency. So that's the one part of the CARES program. The second part, and that's been going on since two thousand and twenty, the second part is a mental health coresponder program that just started in March of this year. And that is a program where CMAR, or CARE, which is a mental health provider in the county funded by Caroline, another umbrella mental health provider, is paying for the program and paid for us to hire a paramedic. They provided the vehicle and all of the advanced life support gear, and they go out on mental health crisis. So if someone's having a crisis right now, they will go out, help assess, and help get them in the right, you know, to the right treatment. So as firefighters, we're very good at dealing with fire emergencies and medical emergencies. We don't necessarily have the training to be mental health responders. And how I break that down for people oftentimes is, if your house is on fire, okay, you want somebody that's action-oriented. They're going to take care of it. If you're bleeding out on the ground, you want someone action-oriented. They're going to take care of it. And sometimes people in a mental health crisis don't need action-oriented. They need somebody to slow down, listen to them, talk to them, hear what the problem is, and get them to the right resource. And so this kind of closes that gap. It's helping out with law enforcement agencies in our area also by, because police are often action-oriented also. And so they'll call out the coresponder program. They'll help get people in the right direction, into the right venue for the treatment that they need. Though, our community risk reduction program is funded by outside sources. It's not funded by tax dollars. So right now, we have contracts with Legacy Hospital System, Peace Health. So right now we have contracts with Legacy Hospital System, Peace Health, AdSWA, SWATCH, which is the Southwest Washington Accountable Communities Health, using federal dollars, but it's not local property tax dollars. So all of those programs are have outside funding for them. So it's not taking up dollars that would be spent and voted on by the people for a fire levy or an EMS levy. Next slide. So we are very big on accountability. I personally am very big on it and and the commissioners help keep an eye on our elected commissioners and we have a five person elected board of commissioners elected at large throughout the district. They are the community's representatives, right? So if they want to call and say, hey, what's going on in the fire district? They're there to make sure that everything's going right for the community. We operate under a balanced budget. We pass our audits. Our finance person, Kathy Strysgoth, is on us all the time, right down to the smallest receipt. Better get it in because we've got audits coming up in August. And every two years is the city knows we get our audits and but we make sure that that we're very accountable to the money where it goes. We've done a lot for financial stability over the last six years. We put some programs in place or some policies and procedures in place. Establish some rainy day funds, some contingency funds. And I really appreciate the commissioners and their support in that. A lot of times people are like, well, we should buy this. We should spend this. We've got money in the bank to spend. I'm like, let's put a little bit in a savings account because you never know when we're going to have that rainy day. So we've done a lot towards a created some financial stability for the district. And part of that was with the help of the taxpayers. In 2017, they voted for a fire levy lid lift that allowed us to return back to $1.50,000, which is the maximum levy allowed under Washington law. And we were able to utilize that to open reopen the fire station in Charter Oak. We have bought five, four new engines, one new ladder truck. The fifth engine was given to us by the Calhoun Indian Tribe, but we're of all new apparatus. And so we're and we've hired a lot of folks and all of that financial stability is due to the work that we've done as well as the taxpayers supporting us on that. We have board meetings on the second and fourth Thursday of each month at 4:00 PM at Fire Station 21 on North 65th and Ridgefield. They are open to the public. So if you ever want to see what's going on, come on up to one of our board meetings. Next slide, please. Okay, so Fire Station 23, right over here on Cedar Street. It's a little, it's a little confusing because the address is back here on Cedar Street, but nothing happens on that. The front of the station, nothing goes on there. It all goes out the back door. That's where you see the roll up doors and fire rigs. Now, minimum of two personnel per day. And I'm going to come back and visit that in a moment. We we run a fire engine out there. So the fire engine staff 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We have a reserve fire engine. So if one of the fire engines somewhere in the district break down, that engine will go in service for that for that engine. They can put it in whether there are ones being repaired or having maintenance done. We have three reserve fire engines throughout the district. We have what's called a squad or a brush units for getting off road or to difficult addresses. Sometimes when you get out in the county, some of the driveways aren't very accessible to a fire engine. So we'll we'll put a note in the dispatch computer. Then when we go, we take the squad and we can get in there without beating up the fire engine. They tend to be smaller and lighter. We have an ATV which is used to get down here to the river bottom and to some of our other areas in the district. If we have a need for getting to a patient, our neighbors to the South Fire District Six has called us a couple of times. We go down to Whipple Creek Park and and go in there. People like to ride horses or hike in there. They've fallen down. So we help out our neighbors when we can and they help us out when we when we need a hand on different things. So we have an ATV here. We have a special rescue, which is a unit for carrying specialized equipment for the tech rescue team. And then we have the rescue raft that we talked about. Now, the reason I said I wanted to come back to that is because last year, last August, the voters throughout the district passed an emergency medical services levy. And what that EMS levy did is is it allowed us to hire enough paramedics to put a paramedic on every response unit every day for 24 hours a day. And that will greatly increase the level of service in the community. And so we hired seven with that, we had to go through the planning and by the time you test, interview, background check, hire and train, it takes about a year to get somebody on the street. So we hired seven lateral firefighters in February of this year. These were people that were experienced firefighters from as far away as South Carolina. We had a 22 year person from Portland Fire and Rescue says, you know, I started in this department and I like it. I think I'd like it a lot better there. So he's here doing a great job for us. We had firefighters from across Washington and Oregon that came here as that seven laterals and one from Colorado. And so they've done some training to get up to speed. And then in March, we hired 15 brand new people, many of them never been firefighters before. They went through a 14 week training academy and they just hit the the stations on Sunday, July 2nd was their first day out in the stations. So over the past few weeks, our staffing has gone up to where every unit has three firefighters per day and some of them are having four if nobody's on vacation. What? And that's because of the EMS levy. Now, some of several of them are paramedics and they are with a fire training officer right now. That's getting them up to speed on how we do it in Clark County. And once that's done, they'll be disseminated out to the station. So we'll have a paramedic on every rig every day. It also increases the staffing to three and that makes a difference for people here in the community because by Washington law, you have to have three people on a fire response unit to affect a rescue if somebody's trapped in a burning building. And previously we're running two, so we always had to have a second unit come and back us up on that, even in the initial stages of an incident. So now every one of our units will be able to affect a rescue immediately if that should come up. It's rare, but you don't want that day to be the day that your house is on fire. You're trapped inside. And we have to say, well, by law, we have to wait for that second unit to come. It also allows one, one three person unit can handle a lot of call types that we used to have to get two two person units to get three there. And so now we're not running redundancy. We're not running two units just to get enough people on scene. So that should see, you should see some of while our emergency incidents won't go down, the number of unit responses will go down. So back on that one slide where I showed there was 5,418 calls last year, there was 7,700 unit responses. That's because some of those calls take two units or three units or four units. So we're going to lower that unit response number down a little bit. Next slide, please. So in Station 23, total stationary responses, you see it went up from 2020. We had 750 to 908 to 995. So the number of calls right here in this area are going up also. The majority of the calls are going to be for the engine. So you see that those numbers there and you said, hey, well, hey, wait a second. If there's only 995 calls in this area, why'd that engine go on 1354 calls? So that's that multi unit response. So that unit will go and back up the unit in Woodland or back up the unit in Ridgefield if there's a need for multiple units to go. Brush unit doesn't didn't go out too often last year. So we had a quiet brush fire year last year. But if you look at the previous year, it was pretty busy. I'm anticipating this year is going to be busy. It's already been pretty busy for early July. And then some of the other ones, so the like the raft, you see the raft doesn't go out very often. But again, you're trapped in the river. You want to know there's a resource that's going to come out and and save you there. So. And then a little anomaly there, that engine 24, that's the reserve rig. And it usually goes in service for a rig that's broke. But there are certain times where we'll put another engine on, say, what we call a red flag day. So it's it's a combination of high wind, high temperature and low humidity. We'll put another unit on or we'll have a big fire somewhere and everybody's committed. We call people back from home. We say, staff the three reserve engines, this one being one of them, then it picks up a call during that time. So. Next slide. I think I I forgot that I put that slide there at the end. So so that EMS levy again allowed us to hire a lot of folks. We had, we hired so many people, that big group of 15. That's them getting sworn in at at the Catholic Church up here on on 65th. We had to go to another location because we couldn't hold them all in our own building. But they've just been a tremendous group of firefighters. They're very eager to learn. We have one gentleman who won what they call the Bulldog Award. That's the hardest working person at the academy. Run, he won it three out of 14 weeks. And so his comeback, whenever they give him an order to do something, he says, too easy. So he's a military guy and apparently he learned that in the military. So every time they say something, he goes, too easy. So I pulled the captain aside. I go, we're going to find something for him. It's not too easy, but part of the learning process. So that's a that a little bit, if you will go to the next slide, please. There's a little bit of background there. My contact information always accessible for you, but that's a bit of an update of what's going on in the district. Any questions for us?
I have a question.
Yes.
When businesses open up and you guys come in and you guys have to do fire checks and you look at buildings when businesses start, do you do that same with like horse barns and so forth? Because we're a Ridge's barn.
Right.
That was very sad. But it just got me thinking, do you guys have to go up there and clear them or give them suggestions on how they need to precautionary, you know, hold their?
So the short answer is yes. But we do it in the three cities. So in unincorporated Clark County by state law, the county has responsibility for inspections in unincorporated county. So so we do our, we do inspections in Ridgefield, La Center and Woodland. But if it's a something in the unincorporated area, we don't do those inspections. They're supposed to be done though. If it's a commercial property and they have a business permit to do that, they should be inspected every one, two or three years, depending on the hazardous level of that. So a barn is probably not terribly hazardous, but should be inspected once every three years.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious, like if we had something like that in our area, I understand that's not your jurisdiction.
But if it was here in town?
Yeah. Okay, you would be, they would have to get cleared for that. Okay, that would make sense, but I was just curious. Thank you. Yes, the cats always do come down. I have four cats, so that just made me laugh. Like, yes, they do.
I guess my old saying is I've never seen a cat skeleton in a tree. They come down eventually, but we we did respond to them one, one time. This is, I was a very new firefighter. We responded on a report of a cat in a tree. The dispatch center told this lady, we don't do cats in trees. And she said, well, I'll see him here shortly. So they called and says, you better go out. She's expecting it.
Yeah, she's crying.
And she said, I'm going to get you guys some lemonade and went in the house. And one of the guys picked up a dirt cloud through it, hit the tree. The cat ran down. It was waiting at the door and she came out and she goes, oh, you guys are quick. So we had lemonade and that was it. We were done. To be clear, the cat was not hit with the dirt cloud, but the tree was.
I won't call you if my cat goes up the tree.
I would offer if the commissioners have anything to say.
Well, I would like to know, are you guys the recipients of the new ambulances or as such? And have you guys taken?
Thank you. And as I look back, I gave the crew, I requested the crew to come in at 7 o'clock also. So we got our three member crew from Fire Station 23 back here today. Also joining us, we got Captain Keith Graham, firefighter Steve Nelson and firefighter Michael Groat, who I think sat through this last year. We'll have you give it next year. Yes, in November of last year, the Calhoun Tribe gifted Clark Calhoun Fire and Rescue $700,000 for two ambulances. And and when we went back to the foundation and said, it'll probably cost about 800,000 for the two ambulances, they said, we'll find it. So we're looking at about $800,000 from the Calhoun Tribal Foundation. Part of the reason for that is we expressed that we're very concerned about ambulance response times in the county. So we are your first responder. We come out and and we initiate treatment. We stabilize you. If you're having a medical emergency, if you're in a car, we we get you out, you know, stabilize you, cut you out of the car if we need you, not you personally, the car. But and we get it all ready and then you're transported by a private ambulance provider. And and we are, which started in 2015, was a piggyback contract on a city of Vancouver contract. And in the time that I've been here, when I first got here, I said, then we're waiting way too long on ambulances. Everything north of 179th Street, ambulances have to be here in 19 minutes and 59 seconds. So 20 minutes, 90% of the time. That's a tremendously long time to wait for an ambulance. Okay, so because south of 179th, it's it's 12 minutes, 11:59. And so I've been working with the contractors, saying, we've got to do better. You've got to do better. They say, well, it's just going to cost you more money. And so that was already going on when all of a sudden they started not showing up at all for like 25, 30, 35, 45 minutes. And so part of the EMS levy was to purchase ambulances and put them in service. The gift from the Calhoun Indian Foundation allows us to save that that 800,000 in the general fund to use for some other items. But when they heard about the problems, they said, what can we do to help? Gifted us two ambulances. The first one showed up two weeks ago tomorrow. So it was at Advanced Signs in Woodland, getting badge and all the right stickers on. So you recognize what comes by and it just came back yesterday. So it'll get outfitted with some other equipment, mobile data computers, radios, all the different types of equipment that we have to put in and we'll be ready to put it in service. And what I would have told the voters and what I've told the ambulance company is that if you can't make the time, you're delayed or not going to make it all, we will transport our citizens. So and and sometimes they say, well, but you get fine money, you know, we pay you fine money for over that time. Money doesn't mean anything if somebody's laying on the floor, bleeding out or not breathing. They need to get to the hospital. We need the ability to do that. We'll put the ambulances in service. And that 10 year contract comes up for renewal and it'll all be hashed out next year for renewal on 1/1 of 25. And when that new contract goes in place, we will have a seat at the table for transporting our our citizens when they have a need.
Awesome. That's great.
Thank you, Chief.
I had another question just because it's so soon after the Fourth of July. How was the season?
It was not as bad as years past. Here's what I sent to Rick over at the Reflector. Was an extremely crazy day, but just an average Fourth of July. So across the district, we run 14.8 calls per day. If you average it out, that take that 5418 divided by 365, 14.8 calls a day across the district. We ran 24 calls on July 4th from 7:00 AM July 4th to 7:00 AM July 5th. We had eight, what we call outside fires, so trees on fire, brush, something that's not a structure. We had one vehicle fire right up here on Timman Road, of which the evidence still sits right at the corner of Spencer and Timman. The vehicle's gone, but all the burn up stuff is still there. Trying to think what all we we had a couple of serious EMS calls. But overall, we didn't lose any structures in our in our response area this year. But it was a, so 24 calls averaging usually 15.
Sure.
So busier, but eight, eight fires, eight outside fires and then one vehicle fire.
Awesome. Well, thanks for all your support on that day and every day for all your team.
It'll start getting busier. It'll start getting busier. So when we get into August, September, it'll really pick up on the grassroots brush fires.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you for your time.
Chief, could you, we're excited to have you as neighbors here at our new or at your new community risk reduction. Can you just speak briefly on that?
Thank you for that. That's another thing I didn't make a slide or no for. So thank you to City Council for renting us a building. So our community risk reduction team grew quite a bit over the last three years. And we were using them in space at the fire station that normally you'd have enough firefighters there. We have traditionally been understaffed on our firefighter side. So with the with the hiring of 15, 22 people over the last few months, and then they came out of the academy, we needed space. So we have rented the the former city hall up here and that will be our community risk reduction team there. So just earlier today, our logistics chief was in with the contractor, looking at it to see what it would take to put a privacy office in there. Sometimes they take phone calls from people and they can't discuss private stuff out in the open, but we'll have an open area for several people to work, a couple offices. So that'll be our plans examiners, deputy fire marshals, inspectors, and then our our community assistant education teams, our cares team. So yes, thank you for that. And it came along at the right time. There's not a lot of available commercial property in the immediate Ridgefield, La Center area. So it's true.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, Brian Cast will present the Public Works and Community Development Staff Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Starting out on our streets here, as you may have noticed, if you've driven by the high school, we have completed a chip ceiling project on Highland or 336 as it turns into. That was sort of a quick last minute reschedule. Originally, we were on this contractor scheduled to have that done a little bit later in the summer or early fall, but that would have fallen during school time. So they had an opening and we jumped at that opportunity at the expense of advanced public notice. So we kind of did our best to get the word out quick. They were actually done in just a few hours on Saturday. So we're glad that that worked out and we were able to get that done before we have school traffic on that road. In the parks, following up on Al's comments, we are, crews are working on Stern Wheeler Park each week to get the concert in the park venue ready for the, ready for those concerts. We've also been continuing our bark application throughout and have whittled away that pile there that's at Holly Park. On the admin side, we have been building out our asset management system. That's a system called Iwork. And our crews and our supervisors have been building out all of our every catch basin, manhole, all of that is getting into that system so that we can then track maintenance on that. And, you know, assets that have a useful life, we can also see when they're reaching that end of that useful life and then be able to monitor how much staff time and expenses being spent on those and make better educated decisions on as we on as we upgrade our infrastructure. Over in Wastewater, they're completing that same process. So we're excited to have that new tool that council has provided for us. I want to also highlight that our Wastewater crew and as well as Amy, our public works supervisor, were able to attend a two-day session out at Alani on membrane bioreactors. They actually had folks in from Japan, Kabota, Japan, putting on a seminar just in our backyard here. So that was very convenient and got some good training out of that. And Emery, our operator, new operator one, has completed his 60-day training plan and met all of his requirements. So he's progressing and we're excited that he's continuing on and thriving down at the treatment plant. On the engineering side, we had received an $800,000 grant for the citywide safety improvements project. We had to actually advertise that project for proposals twice. First time we didn't get any, the second time we got two. However, two proposals is not enough for WASH dot requirements. We have to go through some additional paperwork process, sole source, even though it's not really sole source. They didn't buy my arguments though. So we're working on that. One of the hoops you have to jump through to access federal funds, but we will jump through it. Once that is complete, we'll get that designed and probably shooting for construction next year at this point on that project. And that'll be largely signing, striping, guardrail, basically keeping people on the road. Out at the community center, the contractor currently is working on the parking lot. And then inside the building, they have finished framing, plumbing, sheet rock. The hood is in, the parapet wall on top of the roof for the ventilation is in, and all the kitchen appliances are here. So at this point, there's some ducting work that has to take place for the hood. Fire suppression system needs to be tested, but we're getting very close. So I'm optimistic that that building will be at least ready to use for our days. And if not, even if the kitchen is not fully signed off and inspected by all the county and, and everyone that needs to go in and look in the commercial kitchen, we should be able to at least show that facility off is my hope. And then last thing on the engineering side, I think you mentioned before that Harper Hoff Peterson Regellis is completing design on that shared use path along Pacific Highway. We also have just received an additional $700,000 grant for construction of that project once the design is complete. That's, it involves a bridge structure over a ravine, so it's a somewhat expensive project, but that gets us roughly halfway to funding. So second half is always easier than the first half. So we're grateful for that grant opportunity. Over on the building side, we're at 182 permits so far, including 73 single-family residents. So we are back onto our pace for sort of 2021 and 2020, after a little bit of a slowdown last year. Again, I think that was due to a lack of available buildable lots. Moving into the community development report, number one on the map here, Lockwood Meadows, that project has started construction, grading is underway there. There was an injury on that site that Chief Nor alluded to. We're glad that that young man's recovering from his injury, but it was unfortunate. Number 13 on the list, Stevens Hillside, we'll be talking about that here on our next item for the development agreement. We also have a future front yard setback code that we'll be discussing with Planning Commission and Council. And then Final Platte is in the works on that as well. Once Final Platte has been completed, we'll start seeing homes go up in that project as well. And then the last things I'd like to mention here, we have a few different sales office, temporary sales office, so model homes that have come in, in some of these new subdivisions that we are working on. And then we also have several sign permits that are under review for the Fortune Casino as they rebrand that from the Palace. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that council might have.
Any questions? Good report, Brian. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
All right. We do have a resolution tonight. Resolution 2023-476, Stevens Hillside. Brian Cast will be presenting.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. So the Stevens Hillside project started out back in 2018 when the project received a preliminary subdivision approval. In 2021, there was an amendment applied for to revise the layout of the subdivision and to improve the layout to conform with both the sloping topography that's out there, as well as a need for better emergency access so that our firefighter partners can safely navigate the streets there. So we processed a post decision review for the project in the spring of last year, and that was approved. And then construction began in summer of last year. Before council for consideration and public hearing this evening is a development agreement. The purpose of this development agreement is to increase the building lot coverage from the code required 35% maximum to 44% on up to half of the lots in the subdivision, and also to increase the impervious service, surface area. So that would include the roof, the driveway, anything that water can't pass through. Our code has a maximum of 50%, and there, the development agreement would increase that to 55% on up to 20 lots. I also want to note that the overall average for the subdivision will remain within the code 35% for building lot coverage and 50% for impervious surface coverage. So they're looking to increase it on some specific lots so that they can offer a specific type of product, that being a single family or single floor, single family residence. But overall, as a, as a project as a whole, they'll be still meeting the code requirements. So our code, La Center Municipal Code 1860, grants the city council the authority to approve development agreements by ordinance or resolution. The purpose of a development agreement is to provide flexibility to certain development standards in exchange for offsetting public benefits. So in this case, the reduction in yard space that will come with a larger footprint building will be offset by some additional open space and recreational amenities and additional trail connection that the developer will be providing. The development agreements also must be consistent with our comprehensive plan goals. And it is staff's position that the development agreement that is before you this evening does meet our comprehensive plan policies. And again, the offsetting public benefit will be some additional open space area in the form of two additional open space tracks that are totaling 0.3 acres that will include landscaping benches, lawn, trash or spectacles, and dog waste stations. And then an additional trail connection for future connection to the south for a trail that is, would run along Bowling Creek and is in our parks plan. I also want to note that although it's not a part of this development agreement, the project itself is also providing a one acre park, which is about four times the size that is required for this size of development. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions before council opens a public hearing and considers action on this resolution.
Who will be responsible to maintain those open areas?
The homeowners association.
Okay.
All right. I didn't see. How many lots did you say?
There's a total of 82, 85, 85 lots.
And you're saying there could be like ranch style homes there as opposed to, is that what you were saying, like one level homes?
Yeah. So New Tradition is the builder. They're actually here with us this evening. So I think they may speak during the public hearing. But basically, the information that they've given staff is that there's a demand for a single level product. Obviously, a single level home has a larger footprint than the equivalently sized two-story projects. And really, the goal, you know, here is to, is to meet that demand and also to provide a product that, you know, that works for, you know, older residents and also allows folks to age in place. Maybe they couldn't go up and downstairs. So that's kind of
But it's not just for seniors. It's for.
No, yeah, it would be, they're just.
Yeah, I was just making sure. Cause I think we have one of those here, don't we? Yeah. Okay, awesome. Thanks.
Any other questions? All right. At this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing at 7:33. Are there any public hearing comments from the audience?
Valerie?
I'd like to speak. I'm on the phone. Valerie Yuskowski with Hayward Yuskowski Associates, 1101 Broadway, number 130, Vancouver. I am here tonight with Naaman Henu of New Tradition Homes and just wanted to speak a little bit alongside of why we're asking for this developers' agreement. When we first came on board with this project into 2021, the site essentially looked like what I would refer to Little Italy. We had the main 19th coming through, and we had steep streets, 15% grade with cul-de-sacs or temporary turnarounds. And every lot was a different elevation. We had some driveways that were looking to be 25, 30% grade on them and eight-foot walls around it. So we took the time to go through a post decision review, reconfigure the site so that we could get emergency services in there where we're loading homes from a flatter street. So I think our steepest grade in there right now is about a 7% where we're loading driveways for homes. And we do have some 15 or close to 15% streets to connect between 19th and 20th. But we put a lot of work into trying to get these flatter lots, and we sacrificed a lot of lot area and created these open space tracks with the idea that not only does it provide a better, safer product and a, something that's more community friendly, but we also located these where we come up from trails on the south side of the site. We've got these benches here. So whether you're at the top or the bottom, you've got a resting spot. And really tried to work it in as an amenity for the community. One of the other things that was driving this is by creating those open spaces, we ended up with some lots that are smaller. So to get a product on there that would fit, that's kind of what's driving that need for a larger building footprint over that 35% because the lot size has shrunk down from where they were originally in the 8,000 to 10,000 square foot range. We've got some there closer to 7,500. So we don't expect to push every single lot to that, but we want to have a variety of product that can go on each lot. So you don't end up in a subdivision where everything looks the same because you've got three house plans and we're just changing colors.
Yeah.
And we want to be able to have that flexibility to allow people to age in space. We are in the Northwest. We do want to have that outdoor living space. It does rain a lot here. So having something that's covered where you can be outside, still enjoy the area. If you go through there today, you'll see the work that we've put in with our monument signage, the wildflowers that we've planted within our open space tracks, and how we've manicured everything that, we've definitely designed it to be a community that we want people to live in, to age in over time, that we don't want it to be anything that's a transient community, but just something that's here to stay and that lasts a test of time. So do you guys have any questions? Naaman, would you like to add anything to that?
It's, it's actually public comment time right now. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Are there any other public hearing comments from the audience?
Dennis?
I see our fire chief back there. Just want to shout out to you. Thank you for, from the citizens of La Center. What a wonderful place to live in and to have you taking care of us. We couldn't ask for any more. Appreciate that. Dennis Hill, 1316 West Alder Place, La Center. Greetings, City Council, Mayor, and La Center citizens. I want to speak this evening on Resolution 2023-476. First, let me say that I am not opposing this resolution. I believe it is too late. The horse has already left the barn. However, I do want to share what I see as a concern we as the citizens of La Center should have regarding what has prompted this resolution. The project started roughly back in 2018, and more recently, the Hillside Development Company in association with New Tradition Homes has begun developing and building on what is called the Stevens Hillside Farm. Over the past several years, city staff, your planning commission, and your city council have developed and approved city planning codes for the use by prospective developers and builders. These codes, I believe, represent what the citizens of La Center want developers and builders to follow if they want to build in our city. I think this development should have, from the very beginning, followed approved city building code, but they did not. I believe this is an issue that is possibly, has the possibility of sending the wrong message to future developers who think they can say one thing and then turn around and ask for forgiveness when they change plans. Therefore, we have this resolution this evening. Developers have access to our code and can determine from the very beginning of their project and project plans, how many lots they can fit on their proposed parcels. If they follow our code, then I believe they are following the desires of each La Center citizen. I want to thank you for that. And I just want to say one more thing here. I appreciated the Cowls, Cowls Tribe making their presentation. But as you recognize, a year ago.
Dennis, we, we keep the comments on resolutions and ordinances to the topic at hand.
I'll follow by saying, God bless America.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
Any other public hearing comments from the audience? Step up, please state your name.
Al Fella, 152 West 15th Street. Yeah, a park. You know, they, I've watched them develop the parks, you know, Hillside Estates, Riverside Estates and everything else. And one thing that really burns me is that, you know, none of them have bathrooms except the porta potty, you know? And so Stevens doesn't have one either, you know? You know, can we look into, next time somebody builds a park, you know, or at least have the hookups, you know, sometime in the future, because that's what we were talking about. You know, we can slip it in there, you know, when we're, you know, fat, dumb and happy by the end of Tom's, you know, tanger. No, thank you. God bless America.
Thank you, Al. Any other public hearing comments from the audience? Any public hearing comments from those calling in? Please press star six to unmute yourselves to speak, state your name, and please state to the topic of the Resolution 2023-476.
Yes, this is Kimberly Goheen Elvin, life citizen of Clark County here. So I'm going to ask, and I really agree with the past speaker, by the way. So how many illegal immigrants will be housed in La Center as this council follows the Growth Management Act, which follows the United Nations?
Kimberly, Kimberly is not on the.
I know. You need to let me put the background into this, what I'm going to be talking about, sir. So I am putting the background into what this resolution is. And I get to do that. My First Amendment right. And so the, so you're following the Growth Management Act, that's what this follows under, which does follow the United Nations and again is instigated by criminal Biden at, and I ask this council to discern what Joe Biden is doing to America as he has sold us out again. He allowed millions of illegal immigrants here to dilute our constitution in many ways. So I'm going to ask how many, how many illegal immigrants will be here?
Please mute. Thank you. Are there any other public hearing comments from those calling in? Please press star six to unmute yourselves to speak and state your name. Please state of the topic of the Resolution 2023-476. Clerk, are there any public hearing comments to be read?
None to be read.
Thank you. I would like to now close the public hearing at 7:43 PM. Any comments from the council or questions? Developers are here as well.
So just to clarify as to what Dennis was saying, so the original layout of this property, was it set up to have a less amount of. layout of this property, was it set up to have, uh, less amount of lots, or?
I believe that it had the same number of lots, uh, just in a different configuration. Uh, as Valerie said, it was, uh, the main road through with cul-de-sacs sort of going off up and down the hills to the north and south. Um, and I think there was some challenges with making those cul-de-sacs have a grade that the firefighter trucks could get up and down. That was one of the large reasons that we looked at, or that they looked at, coming back with that post-decision review to, to realign things. I think also around that post-decision review time, um, New Tradition joined the project, is that correct?
So was, was the land already excavated at that?
No, so they had, uh, they had approval, basically. It had gone through the land use process and the hearings examiner, um, but they hadn't actually started construction on the project and then, you know, realized that maybe a different layout was better. Um, and then, again, at that time, the builder, New Tradition, came on board with the project as well. Um, and so that kind of, you know, it's the same project, the same number of lots, same property, but, uh, you know, essentially a different subdivision at that time.
And I think it makes sense for what they're doing. I've seen neighborhoods where driveways are extremely steep and hard to access and whatnot, and I don't think people always know what they're getting into before they, um, start to build houses on those properties, and I've been up to that subdivision, so I have seen the layout, and it does make it quite a bit more accessible. So I think for what they're trying to accomplish, it makes sense.
Yeah, I think it's understandable that things are going to change over time when you start a project like that, that you gotta give some little room. I live in a cul-de-sac and there's no room for any emergency vehicles hardly, unless you want to be on my property, so I think it's great that you're gonna change things and make it, you know, reasonable for everybody, so you don't have neighbors suing each other.
I think the only question that I have is, obviously, water has to go somewhere and, and there's a lot of leaking areas in the city of La Center, so water comes out of the ground as well as sits on top and, and rolls away, so, um, I'm assuming the answer is yes, but there was consideration given to drainage and places for that, that water to go, whether it be catch basins or, or others, so, you know, if somebody wants to buy a house with very little yard, I think that's their, their right to do. The only way it would affect the neighbors is if all that runoff ends up collecting somewhere it's not supposed to. So I guess to shorten it up is, has that been mitigated?
Yeah, so on this, uh, and Valerie may be able to speak to it, she designed the thing, but, um, there's, with the new layout, the, the, you know, there's a flat part of the, sort of the upper, you know, the front yard, and then it slopes either up or down, depending on which side of the road you're on. Um, and then there's backyard drains and/or retaining walls that have drainage systems in them, uh, to help mitigate that, because you're right, we do have a lot of, you know, underground subsurface flow and, you know, you need drainage systems to be able to capture that, so there, you know, in addition to the, the standard stormwater system that's in the street with your catch basins and everything, there's also some backyard drainage that's provided with this project.
Perfect, thank you.
Casey brought up another question in mind. I can't remember if, in this subdivision, do they have the, is there like giant retaining walls in these, in this subdivision at all? Um, like, I know, I believe over four feet has to be engineered, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, um, I just, could somebody, um, educate me on what kind of engineering goes into that, because I see those and it does kind of seem a little bit concerning, you know, just in the future, if something were to happen to that, what, I mean, the amount of repair and cost it would take to repair those, you know, should be concerning to whoever's buying it, but I just was curious.
Yeah, so you're correct, anything over four feet of, of overall height, once the wall's done, requires, uh, building permit, and with that, there's typically a geotechnical and structural, um, design provided, so, you know, geotechnical for the, the drainage and the soils, and then structural for the footings and the wall itself. Anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, so when we design those walls, we, we do bring in a structural engineer and a geotech. We do have, um, what they call tiebacks, which go from the face of the wall back into the dirt, and those are like anchoring that wall as well, and then we have a rock section that works as a big drainage mat to pull the water that's collected in the subsurface footing pipe and conveyed to our stormwater system. So they're, they're definitely not just put up and willy-nilly go away, and with New Tradition, a lot of times we'll take those walls because they do cross multiple lots, and those are going to be managed and maintained essentially by the HOA. We'll have jurisdiction, that way you don't have one person decide, well, I'm gonna rip it down and do something, that it is a protected item in the development.
Cool. Thank you for that. Any other questions or comments?
I will just note, there's a typo in our, um, in the agenda, it's actually resolution four-seven-three, so the suggested motion is accurate, but the, the agenda is.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution twenty-two-three dash four-seven-three as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, this is a resolution. Can I, clerk, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Fox?
Yes.
Councilmember Casper?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyle?
Yes.
Councilmember Leha?
Yes.
Councilmember Serbini?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you, council. That leaves us to, or moves us to unfinished business. Council, is there any unfinished business? Not seen any, I'll move on to new business. Council, is there any new business?
Yes, I would, uh, just recommend that we possibly put out a study with community, um, some sort of community outreach between the two contracts that we're gonna be looking at here in the future, and I don't know if we're gonna go forward with doing a work session on that, but, um, I'd just like to see some sort of, uh, community interaction, involvement, yeah?
Yeah, so, yeah, that's something staff and I will, will be discussing in the coming days. All right.
That's all I got.
Thank you. Is there any other business, new business? Okay, can I get a motion to close the meeting?
So moved?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes, thank you, council.